I'll call this meeting together. We have a roll call by the county clerk. And then let's take a roll call of those that are on Zoom. I see four of them right now. Five, four. One of you at the screen.
You're in, Luis. And Dick, Connor.
They haven't used them a while here.
It's been a long time.
For those that are watching online, we're having some technical difficulties with moving back into our, our, uh, normal meeting room. These particular voter confirmation pieces haven't been used in about four, five months. So. Found a few dead batteries. So please, uh, bear with us.
Just do a voice? Um, okay. I don't see Mr. Kelly on Zoom yet. Um, Mr. David, Supervisor David Zoom. Um, Supervisor Rena. Who?
That is, yes.
Okay, thank you. Anita Martin.
Great, David is up.
Okay, Clark Lund. We're good. Laura Payton.
I'm on Zoom.
Okay. Supervisor Coats.
I'm Zoom.
Okay. Supervisor Pulse, Supervisor Lindell. Okay, Supervisor Nealon. Supervisor Schultz. Yeah, I think I have everything, everyone else.
Mary Roberts on Zoom.
Dan.
I see him. I still have you. Okay.
Cause I have Mark Higginson. And anybody where Mary Roberts, thank you.
Yes, Mary, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Like one does not.
Finally get dinner.
I know, but he's not here, here. Okay, so he's missing. So I believe we have. One, two, three, four absent. Six are participating via Zoom and we have 20 present.
Did you get Jeff Smith on Zoom?
Yes, we did. Thank you.
We set?
Yep.
Be quiet, Jeff. Quiet.
I will stand for the pledge of allegiance. Would you please lead us, Mr. Christensen? Take just a moment, uh, a silence to think if we're going to, uh, contemplate our, our actions tonight. Thank you. Mister Administrator, are we compliant with the open meetings law?
We're compliant with the chair.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda. So George, George still move? Okay. George Jacob, Supervisor Jacob, do I have a second? Uh, we'll say Supervisor Erbs. All right. My next question, can everybody hear this all right? Because I, you go with the screen in front of me, I can't tell everybody, okay? All right. Thank you. All in favor of approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it's approved. Uh, we have approval of the September eighth, uh, meeting minutes. Uh, this is due to the fact the executive committee did not meet this month.
As presented, it's Rena.
And that was Amy.
Yep.
Second, John Kennard.
Any further discussion, changes, objections? All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Communications. Karen Clark.
Thank you. Um, we have the report net new construction 2020. You're also going to have the report 2020 county apportionment. After that is the treasures report. We do have, um, some retirement recognitions. And then the notice of zoning public hearing October 15th, starting at seven PM. And zoning notice of public hearing on October 22nd, starting at six thirty PM.
It's got four thirty and here's a six thirty or four thirty?
The agenda, the agenda says six thirty.
Correct that on the document or am I missing it?
I don't, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you have.
Page six of the package that's sitting here.
There's two times.
It says you need to register by four thirty?
I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
And we have retirement recognition here. Is anyone here?
Yeah, Terry, Terry will take.
Okay.
Give me some of those.
All right.
Terry, can you quick present our candidates, please, for retirement recognition? And Amy is in here.
Okay, thank you. So this is a little bit different from, for me, uh, this evening as well, doing this virtually, but we do have three counties for the last, um, uh, three months. Since my human services department that were unable to make it with us tonight, Mary Olstrander. Uh, she was a finance, financial intake worker for almost 30 years before she decided to retire from our, um, county. Um, and moved up north is my understanding already. Weber was our alternate care coordinator for almost nine months. And then you could have a gentleman there as a tonight that is, I think, everybody recognizes Roger Kilmanen from our fair park. Our fair park supervisor, um, recently retired in August, April 25th, he was the county, and I know, I think anyway, both Amy and Ben, they have some words and a presentation that they, or, um, yesterday left to present to him.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Listel, the Jefferson County Fair Park Director, and tonight I am honored to congratulate Roger Kilmanen on his retirement from Jefferson County after 25 years. Roger started working for the county in the human services and parks departments before transitioning to the fair park where he spent 21 years as the fair park supervisor. He oversaw year round operations, the county fair, and several new construction projects that have positioned the Jefferson County Fair Park to be a premier event facility in Southern Wisconsin. Roger truly gave his all to the fair park, working nights and weekends and overtime to ensure our event renters had the best experience and customer service while renting our facility. There is a saying that when you retire, you can enjoy every day being Saturday. We joke that that saying doesn't apply to Roger because he worked almost every Saturday of his career. Roger has made a positive impact on our staff, our stakeholders and our community. And we know his passion for serving others will continue through his retirement and we look forward to seeing him around. It's been an absolute honor to work with Roger and have him as a mentor for the last nine years. We thank you for your years of service and we wish you all the best on your new adventures and again, congratulations. We have a nice plaque for Roger cutting board and as their chip kit as well. So congratulations. Thanks, everyone.
Oh, no, it was, and it was great working for the county. It's, it was a lot of good years there. Um, like Amy said, I started at human services and moved on to the parks and then into the fair park. So it's, it's been great working for the county. Thank you.
Anything more, Terry? All right. Then we'll move on to public comment. Is there any public comment on anything on the agenda here tonight? Anybody for public comment on it tonight? Anybody sign in, Ben? Thank you. All right, special order of business. Presentation of the 2021 recommended budget, the highlight of the evening. Mister Administrator.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So. Everyone tonight should have at their desk and those who are online, we'll make sure we get the copy. So use the large, roughly four or five page document. Uh, for your reading pleasure, um, this is just a, a lot of effort by a lot of teamwork, um, whether it's from our staff to our various committees, the finance committee especially. Um, but this took a lot of time to really talk through it. And as, and as I always tell people when they wanted to learn more about the county is take a look at this document. Um, there's a lot of data in there. There's a lot of things that we do on a day to day basis with our departments. There's a lot of data about our communities. So, uh, a great learning document in terms of how we operate and look ahead and talk through it. Um, for those in the audience, you should also have a copy of the presentation tonight, um, to, uh, as we walk through, I did try to, uh, make page references within this document you'll see. So if you want to mark it down to go back later within the budget book, you'll have that opportunity to do so. So one thing as we started looking at the budget going into 2021, um, we realized 2020 was a little bit of a different year. And some things that we had planned for in 2020 and the outlook, we looked for not only just 2021, but going into 2022 and beyond. We had to look at things differently. And as I always look at, how do I present this to the county board? It's really topic points in time to say, how do you take three to four months of staff work? How do you take a week of finance committee talking to our departments and try to get it? So it's not a two hour presentation for y'all tonight either. And so part of tonight though, as I thought to talk through some of the back, the baselines in the background of how we got to the budget that's being recommended tonight by myself in the finance committee. And part of this, uh, talking through some of the conditions that we've worked together as a team. And when I say team, it's not just those within these walls, but it's also many of our community partners as we look ahead to the future. So our results are looking actually very good for 2020. Um, and a lot of it's because we had to make some decisions quickly and, and for those, especially on the finance executive committee, we talked through those terms of, uh, financial first aid. And looking at some of the things we had to do such as delaying purchases, uh, slowing down and, uh, filling positions at points in time. Various things that we did to make sure we had the revenues in place to situate the expenditure we planned for. There's a terminology I hear, I heard recently on a call was on, it's called the emergency triage when we look at budgets. And in some ways they look very fortunate where we're at today. There's parts across the country that are looking at 20, 30% reductions, uh, in their budgets. And we're not right there at this point in time. And I think part is because those in this room and on Zoom that we've gotten to that point that we've made some sound decisions that carry forward, not only in 2020, but as we look at 2021. But we learned a lot of lessons from what we've experienced. There's some new ways of how we operate, looking ahead to the future and some things that will probably move back to the board. As we look at, how can we do things such as, uh, today, human services talked about telehealth. Um, they, they rapidly changed to telehealth so we could keep seeing folks who needed our assistance. But the other thing you'll realize in the, the human services department, a lot of our revenue comes from providing those services. And so if they're not seeing our patients, those who need the help, they're not getting the revenue streams. But it's worked extremely well. Folks who need that service are getting it. Um, those who don't have transportation are getting it and it's way to fill that gap. So there's a services like that. We'll look at learning lessons, bring back from operations. New ideas have emerged. Well, and those service impacts, then you're going to see a graphic later on and some of the things that happened in this year in terms of how it relates to various services within the county. Some of it, we'll use human services again relates to where we went with homelessness, um, where we're at with suicide calls. Um, they create new ideas. They, um, today we talked more about a program called Hope. And that was an opportunity to work with opportunities incorporated and finding people who might have homelessness, not just giving a voucher. But we're getting the day employment with opportunities. So they also are growing a paycheck and we work with them as they get case managed to keep moving on with where they're at. But things such as, oh, parks, folks realize in these conditions, when other parks are even getting shut down by a state, how wonderful the park system is to just get out and walk. Uh, and be a part of the community. And those are things that we continue to want to look at the impacts. We're going to talk through some of the economic impacts. Um, there's a lot of continued data of what that might look like and that's some of our thoughts as we look through this. But we also looked at principles we want to look at going into 20.1 budget. And the three terms we used was flexibility, sustainability and resilient or resilient. COVID-19 we'll talk through, but that definitely had an impact of how we operate. And then obviously going into this year, we knew we're going to have a lot of plans. New ideas looking ahead to the future for the next 10 to 20 years, but a big part of that planning is how do you implement? How do we invest in implementation of these ideas to make a better ecosystem for our communities and the county as a whole? And the other small thing is looking at our facilities. And there's a direct correlation as we look at our capital budgets, but also how we are structured for the future. And so we have termed this somewhat a budget in transition. So economic unknowns, um, in about a few weeks, Audrey, right? We have election coming up, I heard, right? So I think those were us all saying, there's going to be some impacts in terms of how our economy is going to, um, change or be different. No matter what happens, whoever wins that office, right? We will, there will be some, uh, impacts related to post-election impacts. Unemployment, I'll be going through that a little bit to give you a snapshot of where unemployment was and how it's recovered and some of the outlooks going ahead. Discretionary spending, our key look at that is our sales tax. And we've had some mixed data. Uh, probably around June of this year, we're talking to finance and executive committee. And we're seeing projections of this, this year we'd have a 10 to 15% loss in sales tax. That's almost seven figures. We're probably not going to hit that. That's a positive, right? But we see different months that have been very positive for us and others not as much. So we've had about three to four months post-COVID, that's after March. Um, that we've had a 10 to 30% loss. Our very first month in March during the state fair home order, we had over a 30% reduction in our sales tax coming in. In July, and keep in mind, our sales tax is always two months delayed, which have been received. We had a nice plus up, almost a 20% increase over the last two years on average. Well, what happened in May? We had stimulus checks going out. And so part of what we've looked at in terms of how our sales tax locate, we're also looking at the federal stimulus programs that maybe have propped up certain things such as the PPP program. The unemployment benefits and things like that. And what continues going into 20.1 that we had to look for. Not only are those impacts we're watching for, it's also the Fed interest rates. And if you're refinancing, you're buying home, it is wonderful right now with our interest rates. Um, however, our investment income based on state statute is restricted to certain things we can invest in. And a lot of those investments are high directly, basically the Fed interest rate is the best way to look at it. And so about two years ago, we had changed some of our protocols and our investment strategy. And that dividend income was well over a million dollars a year. Coming into 2021, that projection is down to $500,000. So a half million dollar reduction. We expect that's going to be in place for at least two to three years as we look at recovery of where the interest rates go and the delay in terms of the coupons as we try to reinvest those dollars. Talked a lot about the stimulus and we expect now for sure, uh, we don't expect a stimulus package to come at until after elections. And what's included in that? Uh, if you know today, please let me know. But it's everywhere from how does it impact the state budget? How does it impact local government? Does it reinsert some of those programs we just talked to in terms of unemployments or PPPs and things like that? So we will continue to monitor that and work with our legislators as we move and, and see where that heads for the future. Then finally, the state budget would probably has the biggest impact to many of our services as we look at to the future. Uh, 2020 and 2021 ended up very well. Actually, if you look at some of the legislative fiscal bureaus as a wrap up with 20, uh, end of 2020, which is June 30th, the 2020 is the state budget. Very positive, actually in the black and they're putting more money in the rainy day fund. Um, I think I kind of told this group before. Last year when they're looking at the rainy day fund, they were like, this is, it looks great. Folks were trying to decide, are we doing a tax cut? We spending more money and, and a decision couldn't be made. Well, that was a saving grace in some ways because that helped carry us through what happened. Also during the end of 2020, the governor, uh, directed DOA to look at about $70 million in cuts towards the end of fiscal year to help, um, look at the balances of going forward. He has also already ordered for going into the second part of the budget, a $300 million reduction in spending. We're already getting ready to prep for the next budget. So we do not know how that spending cuts may impact us. That's everything from our local government aid to some of the other programs our various departments gets as reimbursement. So we'll continue to monitor that, work with our partners and our various, uh, agencies, our statewide organizations such as WCA, WIC, uh, the county's highway association, a variety of association as we look at the long-term impacts of that for the future. And the other part, we kind of knew walking into this is we're going to look at our future. And what is that structure for the future to help us going forward? So we talked about some of the economic unknowns. But a lot of this ties back to our policy and direction. And the big thing that's going on right now, obviously our comprehensive plan. And how do we structure, are there ways we can look at duplication? Is there ways to look at skill sets we need for the future and continue to work with our staff of what those needs are? There's new ideas that are coming in and things that might've been in place 20 years ago, might have some new ideas for the future as we look at some of the impacts that are coming. With the ultimate goal of being sustainable. And so part of our process is although we're not filling all positions this evening potentially. We are looking at ways that we can fund those ideas when we come back to the county board of first quarter 20.1, with some ideas for potentially positions to carry us to the future. There's several departments impacted by this. Um, we're looking at administration, land and water. And just as a note, um, we have restored funding part-time for the water conservation position. And as part of that motion, we are looking at, continuing to look at full-time funding that position going into 2021. Looking at GIS, um, we know that is the future of data and how that is integrated with many reporting mechanisms. You will see in the budget that, uh, uh, planning director is kind of has a, a unique square around the land information department. That's because Matt's helping to oversee that temporarily right now. That's not a permanent change at this point in time, but he's helping me, um, oversee that staff. Uh, parks, we're going to ask for some flexibility as we look at how that is managed between the director position and the current superintendent position. Um, and I think we're heading in a direction where we're going to go leadership. They have done a wonderful job of keeping that system going. And then other departments, uh, zoning, highway, economic developments, we look at the comprehensive plan is truly a comprehensive plan. And those are some of the primary departments, but it's also human services is in there, health departments in there. Our emergency management, just to name a few, are all part of our large term needs. So again, as this comes through, our top plan is going in front of the steering committee tomorrow morning, actually, for their final review and recommendations. Once that is done, we'll be doing regional meetings to engage the public again in the final documents. And then that will come back in front of the county board from so, for some of that policy discussion of the future. A big part of that we've been pushing is the implementation plan for the comprehensive plan and the form and preservation plan. So what I'm showing you on the screen right now is example of what the implementation grid pattern will look like. It is about 34 pages right now. With various tasks impacting various departments and other functionalities. And so part of what we're trying to do is making sure we're lining up the resources needed to carry out division, if that is directing the county board, which wishes to take the county. And as part of our process, this is a carryover from our strategic planning process and our priority based budgeting and it's all kind of in lines. But this is kind of our, our grading sheet and those, these are the various areas that we look at when we try to objectively look at various programs that we offer. I know we have some new county board members. When we did the analysis for our prior base budgeting, we have over 800 programs that the county offers in, to various stakeholders of the county. And so it's not a quick scoring thing that we need to look at. It's an ongoing basis to make sure we're delivering the best services possible for the county. So as you all know, we've had a little thing going on since March. And it's impacted our lives in various ways. Um, whether it's us as personal, in terms of we work with our families to being an employer and how that looks. And so one thing as we look to the future with public health right now, it's just some of the unknowns as we go into 2021. We're not entirely sure what are the expectations of continuing contact tracing, disease investigation? What are our case rates going to look like going into 2021? What are our vaccine responsibilities going to be? And that's already being planned as we look to the future. And there's other duties and responsibilities in public health besides just COVID-19. And how do we make sure they're fulfilling those needs as well? Going into this past year, we were working through some structural items in terms of how they look for the future period. And we're actually planning using fund balance by county board authorization for 2020. We did not have to do that this year, but it's something that we have to be cognizant of going to the future. But to put in perspective, the response our team has had for COVID-19 is well over a million dollars of additional staffing time had been engaged in or projected to be finished up by the end of 2020. We are expected that we know today that we receive about $436,000 additionally for 2021. There's a little gap there. Um, you will find in the budget, we have reserved an additional one-time revenue solister of about $105,000 to help augment that. But we do not know if that will be enough. And so that could be part of our carryover proposals that we look at that for the future to help protect that. And just to get put in perspective, we currently have about 28 staff working on our response right now. Uh, seven are using a, a entity called Maxim. They're, they, they're a job placement service that really focuses on medical care. They helped us with the sheriff's department example for nursing. So we have nurses, contact tracers and epidemiologists that we contract through Maxim right now. We have three other contracted staff that we have, uh, contracts on the side working with to fill. We brought in nine LTE positions that are officially county positions. We've reallocated two, uh, staff part-time, so they have duties in other departments, but personally at the time is helping our public health team out, specifically data entry. And seven regular staff are really fully dedicated to that. And throughout the periods, we also sometimes have volunteer students to help out. I just want to paint that picture, understanding that that's an unknown that many of us in the state and country, quite frankly, are trying to figure out how we can keep this going. And what does that mean for state and federal funding to help augment those needs? Or there could be this kind of expectations. And so we're going to continue those conversations as we look at to the future. But as we look through, as you look through this budget, the coming weeks, I think I just want to make sure you keep that in mind of some of the emerging needs that we have to react to now, um, that I can't wait. So this is a slide I brought forward, uh, to probably around April. And, and I came upon it in a Wisconsin Hospital Association briefing and we're looking at the impact of COVID-19 and, and some of the recoveries. And it's probably some of these waves might be a little bit different now, meaning the waves one, two, and three related to COVID response. Um, urgent needs, uh, those, uh, some of those procedures maybe got postponed. Um, and some ongoing chronic condition responses. And that's something that our team continue to work with our hospitals. Uh, every Wednesday we have emergency operations center call still with our hospital system, talking through where they're at and some of those needs that are coming up. But what I really wanted to focus on and highlight was that fourth wave. And you see that large arcing circle initially. And then you see those things around those fourth waves as example. And it's psycho trauma. Mental illness, economic injury recovery, burnout, et cetera. And when that first popped up to me, I, I see that as, that's county services. That's some of our safety net responsibilities and, and see how far high that is and how long that goes for. And I do this just to set the stage as we look at long-term needs as we recover as communities. There's a lot of needs we're trying to work through to. There's a lot of needs we're trying to work through together, whether it's response to the public health, work with our human services and helping our businesses. That's why we did things such as the back to business program partnered with E W Whitewater is really how do we help our businesses recover from what's going on? So just a graphic to kind of really spoke to me as we look to the future. So the other thing we often talk about is the unemployment. And I showed a graphic that showed some spikes and this top thing is what happened within Wisconsin. And these shades are past recession periods and you can kind of see what happened with those peaks and valleys of unemployment. And come all the way over to 2020 and you'll see by far a huge spike of unemployment. Now the positive is it's probably recovered quicker than we expected in some ways in unemployment too. And so the numbers I'm showing on the left for March is from DWD for Jefferson County specific. And in March before pre-COVID, our labor force was also 45,650 with a total employment of 44,164 with unemployment of 1,400, so roughly a 3.3% unemployment rate. August, the latest numbers that just released, we have a little bit bigger labor force, a slightly more employment in the force, but unemployment about 2,200. So a 4.9% unemployment rate, which quite honestly was probably better than most people were expecting around April and May. And you're going to see that in a second why I say that. And then on the right is a week by week analysis of the initial claims of folks first claim unemployment and then ongoing weekly claims. So prior week 11 is roughly right before in March. And so we had initial claims roughly of 73. If you look at the data, it was roughly what was happening almost every week, up and down just a little bit. But at week 12, it went to 529 and then we peaked at about 1,300. We're back down to about 136 on a weekly basis with the latest data presented. Weekly claims, these are ongoing claims cumulative. And so week 12 was that week kind of prior to things having unemployment, 581. Week 13 progressively doubled and then it doubled again in week 14 till finally in week 17, our peak was 3596. We're back down to about 1261 with weekly claims. So this is our maps. So keep in mind, this is always delayed. So March, we had 3.3% that number I showed you in green, very positive number. But in April, it quickly jumped to 12%. Again, those are the numbers that people were very concerned about as we were walking into this. And then we slowly started seeing the impact slow down, 9.8%, June 7.3%, July 5.7% and then till August of 4.9%. Now, these numbers are better than we had hoped. It still doesn't mean we're out of the woods. And again, I go back to some of the calls that our various services get, the need is still real. Underemployment is real as we look for the future. So we're going to continue to monitor the numbers, but those are the things I thought we would find interesting as we look at the future and the budget impacts. So now we'll get into the real numbers. So I'm not going to go there's area by area, but I just want to highlight the extent of our table of contents. It kind of lays out everything that's in this book, everything from our organizational structure. And I always like to point to the organizational structures we go in these meetings. Keep in mind, we have 26 departments to provide over 800 programs. So keep that in mind as we try to balance this budget across all the various responsibilities that we have as county government. You get to see my message if you'd like to read that. But the one thing I do want to highlight is our budget award. I'm very proud that for our 20-point budget for the sixth year in a row, we have received an award from the Government Finance Officers Association. I think again, we mentioned it, but just that's a high level of external review and the team has done a great job. This is the department heads, it's the fiscal staff, it's all, it's Mark and his staff and the finance departments, the fiscal staffs, the human services, highway, et cetera. This wouldn't be done without them. So I just want to recognize and it's been recognized outside. And then all the other items that are in the budget, so just as a highlight, so you can kind of go through those areas that might be of interest to you. General fund, this is a point that pretty much covers all our departments. So it's a very broad, so you have to look at the individual areas in the table of context of the breakdown department by department. County profile, this is the one area, again, if you want to know Jefferson County, a high level look, just take a look at it. There's a lot of good data in there in terms of where we're at today, where we're heading, what you're seeing in terms of population growth by communities and some trends that you might be seeing out there. So it's a great area to look. And then each department, so I'm not going to go department by department. But what I do want to make sure, especially as we do have newborn members, is the general budget layout by each department and what we've asked them to do. So each department, you will find a department mission and their vision of how they operate and carry out their duties and responsibilities. You're going to see department goals. What do they hope to carry out and tell a story of how they want to carry that department going into 2021 and beyond? Most of the areas you will see some tie back to some of our strategic goals and how does that fit in in terms of that umbrella? You're going to be see some metrics in some cases. What are those key things that talk about their department? We've talked about in the future, talking about more outcome-based metrics, but right now you're going to see a lot of numbers in there in many cases and talking about the program they deliver. Oh, there's an opportunity for the departments to talk about factors that have influenced some of the things going on, whether it's the staffing level to maybe higher rates of cases coming in. Just things that impact their service delivery or accomplishments going forward. You'll see each department's organizational chart broken down by each function, so you can see how we're staffed. A financial summary and a financial summary is basically a one-page look and it rolls in all the functions of that department in one page. And if you really want to get into it, then all the detailed numbers, the business unit by business units behind that, but that gives you a quick snapshot. And then it talks to if they have any highlights of changes in their budget, capital needs that they might have, impact of property taxes or staffing FTEs. So that's in general what you'll see in each department. So the budget summary, the main page you should really focus on, again, as a quick snapshot is probably page 60. That's what we'll spend a little bit of time tonight on. And then those other areas, we'll just kind of talk through various ways to view the budget and different data. So the budget summary, we try to break it down by the major funds that we have. One new fund that you'll see here is an internal service fund. We have started a new fund for our fleet management. This was an idea that we came forward with, working with Bill, Mark and human services specifically and some of the other departments. How do we do a better job of projecting the needs of our vehicles and find a way to make it more cost-effective for the county? In many ways, we're trying to make it modeled after the highway shop, but we just keep the vehicles going and it pays for itself in the long term as a view. So that's why that's a new service fund. So the left is the estimated expenditure. So in essence, that's what we expect department by department or function of the total cost of operational. So we're proposing a budget of just over $80 million. Estimated revenues, these are external revenue sources that are coming to the various departments. So an example is in highway department, you'll see about $6.6 million. So for newborn members, we highway departments, the enterprise fund, because we contract out for our services with the state of Wisconsin and other entities. Wisconsin is very unique because you will never see a Wisconsin DOT truck out there. Because it's the counties do all the work for the state for the most part. So that's why you see us on the interstate system, et cetera. But there's a contract to get that money back from the state of Wisconsin. So a good chunk of that 6.6 million are paid for services primarily with the state, but also for some municipalities, et cetera. This year is a little extra money in there because they did get what was called an MLS grant, about a million dollars for the county highway end project from a state grant. So that's incorporated in that dollar. So those are other revenue sources. That's why you see human services so high. Again, I talked through the fee for services and things they do for billing like Medicare, bad to care, things like that and other grant programs they get. So it gives you the net expenses when you minus those out. Other financing resources, a variety of things. So the easiest one I always think about is some of the things in the sheriff's department, like deer programs and things like that. So you'll see later on, there's actually a detailed breakdown if you want to see what those other financing resources are all. And ultimately on the right is then how do we break down the tax levy department by department? Function by function, I should say. So in essence, we basically have four levies is the best way to say it. So you have your countywide levy, general operation, countywide levy debt, and then non-countywide health department. And that's because the city of Watertown has their own health department, so they don't get charged taxes for that. And then non-countywide library service. And that's because those libraries that have a library service do not get charged that tax. And so that's why you see those deductions out for the full countywide tax levy of about $29 million. So this kind of just goes through it section by section, those areas I just talked about, so I won't read it to you. You can look through that. I did want to highlight for the health department specifically that I do say it's non-COVID. And that's because this is based on their status quo operational budget. And that's something I do want to talk through quickly because I forgot to bring that up. In large part, our departments did churn their status quo budgets. We did ask them to also look at potentially what it'll look like if they reduce by 5% and 10%. And that was to help us look at if we needed to fill the gap for 2020. But a big part of that was also so we had a plan in place if we saw concern going into 2021, so we could take steps immediately. And so that's part of the reason for health department example, we didn't include additional COVID costs because we know what it's going to be at this point in time. So I just want to mention that part of the exercises we made the staff go through. In some cases, we did implement some of those ideas going into this budget already to help bridge that gap between revenue and expenditures to get us to a balanced budget. So last year, we were about an $85 million budget, a lot of that was capital and that's why it's down to about $80 million. So I'm not going to spend time on this again, you can look at those briefly, but in age 82, if you want to see those other financing sources, that's the full breakdown lineup by lineup, those other financing resources are by department. And then ultimately, this is the tax levy, it's how it's being allocated. So the general fund, most of that is the sheriff's department, but about $14 million. The health department is about $873,000. Human services is about 8.9 million. Debt service with the new debt is 1.5 million and then the highway department, $5.6 million. So some other factors we look at going in, so we took some time to talk about sales tax already. So we're being very conservative and we know that, but we're putting up 6.372 million. One thing that we presented and talked with the finance committee on is we want to continue to analyze that to look at actuals because there's some analysis that we could have our best year ever for sales tax. And I'm not sure if we're ready to say that yet. And so there's certain things that we had to restrict that you'll see and we want to have a conversation if the revenue streams coming better, can we restore some of those puts that we had to take? And that includes step programs for employees as an example. General state share revenue is going to be status quo, basically the 1.17 million. As a note, I've been, this is my eighth budget put together, seventh year here. That's the same number from when I started and I think that was the same number two years before that. So although we haven't been impacted by it due to time value of money, what that probably is worth versus where it was about a decade ago. But we also have some other areas that we're seeing some small reductions in revenue that we are, it's a little concerning. So one is the utility state share revenue. That was well over $900,000 last year, about $908,000. It's down to about 880 and we'll continue to monitor it as we go forward. I think for some of you, we understand that's why we went along with transparency in terms of how that formula looks. And I know Supervisor Pritchard's probably the utility commission will look at some of those funding formulas. Personal property aid, so this was taken off the property tax bill about two years ago, Mark, two years ago. And it was to be reimbursed by the state of what we were getting. What we're seeing right now, the trend is roughly being reduced about 20,000, give or take every single year. So we're going to continue to monitor it as we go forward, but that's down about 20,000 of where it was last year for us. We had a very good year in terms of net new construction that's at bottom number, about a 1.8%. It exceeds most of our surrounding counties and the state average as a whole. And I think if you talk to some of our folks, there's a lot of folks looking to try to do something here, whether it's home improvements or new buildings. The one thing I will say is a little, we had a big project in the tunnel lake mills. And so that drove a lot of those costs up. So the value probably is not quite as 1.5 if you look at as long-term trends going forward. And then page 117, we talked through reverse contingency. So we take a lot of time to make sure we have planned fallbacks, just in case something would happen. And one of them is our contingency and we try to keep it close to about a half million dollars. So a lot of times this is where emerging need comes in in terms of staffing levels. If we have a fire alarm system go down or air conditioning units go down, which has happened here, or a generator in the sheriff's department, contingency is built for that in emergencies that we can't plan for. And that's why we put it there, so we do not have to draw it down or take away from other departments. And for the most part, we've been pretty safe most years with that number. But it is an emerging concern as we look at the age of our facilities. Our vested benefit, so one thing that you'll hear us talk a lot about is we like to keep our buckets and you'll see on the fund balance reserved. And one of them is we reserve all our vested benefits. So by our county ordinance, we reserve about 10% of that number. So is available in case we need to do payouts for vested benefits with impact in the department. So that's roughly $300,000 this year based on the formula. You'll also see the revolving loan fund in there that we started this year with carryover funds and additional $100,000 we put into. And then contingency other, I, this is where we're putting those additional dollars for the health department as we look at needed for LTE or contracted staff. So ultimately, you're going to see a few charts coming up here on mill rates. But as you will see, even with the new debt that we've added, you'll see a reduction of our mill rate overall of about 2.08% for countywide. And so on this chart that I'm showing you right now, the light blue is our operator, operational mill rate. And the dark blue is the debt. And then you'll see in the chart below how that's breaking out, taking a year-to-year comparison of operational levy versus debt levy. And so obviously we did walk into this year issuing that $7 million for the self-campus projects and the telecommunications projects. But the positive is the economy in terms of real estate and what's happened is strong and it's helping drive down that mill rate below expectations. This is for the health department, similar trends, a reduction of about 3.89% in the mill rate, even with an add, a slight add of actual levy going into that fund. Again, just a issue of our EAV growing and in that new construction. And then I county wide mill rate for the libraries, a little more significant. This is because of two items. Number one is because of the EAVs and the increase there, but the other thing is they reduced their spending. And so that, those two things drove together. So those who want to understand some formulas, a couple of folks sat through this in the finance committee, but we have a funding formula in terms of how we levy for the library. And so it's based on use. And so that's really that number is driven by. One thing we started forecasting with our libraries on and talking with the finance committee on is the future of libraries. And I say that because our formula is based on actual checkouts of this. Well, let's think of what happened this last few months. Demands were for hotspots. It was demand for digital checkouts and things like that. So one thing we're looking at, what are some of those items we need to make sure are being captured in terms of the total expenditures for the future? Make sure it's equitable, not necessarily increasing the taxes, but make sure it's equitable for in terms of what's being provided. So those are our main mill rates. I know that's always an important topic as we look at it. And then in November, that's part of the resolution that you will see, talk specifically about the levy that you will establish. So even post-working through the budget, even as of last Thursday, continue the items that we're working on are in progress. That we'll be talking to you all about, will be carried over to 20.1. So one is fees. So what you have in your book for fees is there is no changes shown. However, past the time we got to meet with finance committee, we had two departments we continue to work with on potential fees that we should be looking at and that's specifically the sheriff's department and the parks department. And so both those committees have their, parent committees have reviewed their request. They seem acceptable and we'll be bringing them back to you as part of the amendment process in November. Carryovers, I briefly talked through this before specifically about the staff, that's that staffing model. But we do want to look at potentially for some health reserves in terms of making sure we have enough money available for those unknowns. And then flood mitigation. So as we walked into 2020, Donna Hogan, our emergency management director, had looked at about $2 million in grant dollars. Now the positive is she almost got the full $2 million. However, we could not get 100% grants. And so we have a match of about 300,000 we're tracking right now. And so based on where we think we will be heading, our recommendation with finance committee is that we will carry that over going into 20.1. But as part of that process, they have policy conversations of A, do we continue to move forward with property acquisition for flood mitigation? And B, how does that impact our operations? An example that we're working through right now, we have asked fees that be taken down. It's not a small bill. I think it's like 30 of them that we need to take down. So what does that look like for the future? So should we start looking at leasing property out as an example? Are there opportunities on the property together that we can make a better public access? So examples, we installed a fisherman's wharf in one of these old properties and it's very popular for access. So there's more of a policy and planning process that we want to look at. About at one point last week, Mark and I met with the clerk of courts and we began to have a conversation potentially of splitting the register and probate and clerk of courts into actual separate business units. Those offices are independent and they do report to the judiciary, but they're county positions as well. And right now they register and probate contracts and positions and budgets are all within the clerk of courts. And so we're going to be looking at based on some conversation judiciary, a separating amount to separate business departments. So more to follow on that, but just so you're aware, that will be coming forward potentially as well. Drainage districts, we've been having a lot of conversations on drainage districts in terms of some of their independent authority and abilities they have. And we looked at asking them to be self-sufficient. But based on some conversations in a few days, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Mr. Jones about this yet, is that we is that we probably need to carry him for about one more year as they look at transitioning and being self sufficient under state statute. And we'll talk through that a little bit more. Then finally, other insurance. So you'll see us talk through a little bit about health insurance here shortly. But the main thing I look about other insurance really deals with our liability insurance, building insurance, and the up and coming cyber insurance. And so this is emerging trend as we look at how do we control cost, and this is even workers comp. But based on the numbers we're seeing, we're expecting anywhere from twenty, thirty percent increases going into twenty twenty one. And we don't expect that to change beyond those years either. And that's a national trend. It's everywhere from claims being up, increased liability potential and awards being made to there's a large reinsurance in the U.S. marketplace that left the country. And so it kind of, and so this is something we continue to look at, those costs, how it impacts operations. And that's part of the reason that you do see that we've been talking about having a risk management position within the budget is how, how do we manage those costs going forward? On page seventy nine, we talk of our fund balance. So bottom line is we ended the year very well in twenty nineteen again. And the upper part, you'll see the less, less non-spendable, less restricted. Those are basically our, if you think of the balance sheet, those are kind of our liabilities we have out there, that things that we go reserving for from a cash standpoint. Unassigned fund balance, that was our number from last year. So we just kind of, the way we have to do accounting, Mark tells me is we have to carry that over, reserve it because we're spending it in this year. And then what do we actually apply? So in essence, what we're trying to do is we have in our fund balance policy, shall have two months of reserve with the goal of three months. And the goal really is a shell with how we've administered that policy of three months. So that's roughly nineteen million dollars that's being reserved for three months in our fund balance. So what that leaves us with is approximately eight hundred eighty thousand dollars is short of it that we will use towards capital and an unassigned fund balance process. As I mentioned, this year with health department, there are separate fund balance where we had the stream being non-county wide. In the past, we asked for an exception to policy. There will be no exception need for twenty point one. And if you want to really read about where Mark thinks we're heading going into twenty twenty in terms of how we'll end the year with some of his fiscal cohorts. Take a look at the summary fund balance projections and kind of that really gives you an idea where we're heading. So. So personnel overview, obviously, we're a service organization, and that's a biggest part of it. So roughly all in. This includes fringe benefits, et cetera. That's quotes of forty eight point seven million dollars. This includes all reclassification changes, all position changes, et cetera, that are in there. We are looking at making some modifications to our insurance program. As we may recall, we have an insurance with, with Dean, and we have a contract limitation of seven point five percent cap. That's still a big number. And so we are going to offer two programs to employees this year. One is the existing program of fifteen hundred and a three thousand dollar deductible. Similar premiums, but their HSA contribution to the county would be reduced significantly decently. Then we'll also introduce a deductible program as fifteen hundred and three thousand with a co-insurance copay option up to two thousand and four thousand. Fairly flat premiums, but then the HSA contribution would be reduced, but not as much from the county. We are recommending this with a lot of staff who worked hard, looking at areas of a one percent market adjustment cost of living. For reference, a cost of living one percent, the county is about two hundred ninety five thousand dollars. We have roughly six hundred employees, so that's roughly what the cost is. We are suspending steps at this point in this budget to make a balance. And so that's that area when we look at some items. If numbers come in better, we'd like to have that conversation mid-year to look at. We can restore that in the future. And that's where we talk about those mid-year reviews. Process steps is roughly three hundred eighty thousand dollars on an annual basis. So these are some of the personnel changes, and you'll see them through page eighty three to eighty six. There's a position added in administration. Health department, really, this is a cleanup act. As you may recall, we did officially tomorrow, they officially start, two days tomorrow, they officially start. We contracted out our entire health operation into jail. And so this is just takes care of the administrative work related to that process. And clerk of courts, just some adjustments and unfunding an interim position and updating a a sharing position within the registered probate juvenile clerk, kind of goes back to what I talked about before. And county clerk, we've had a position not needing the benefits lately, so we are unfunding that at this point in time. In economic development, there's a new position be created, but not funded. The intent behind that is there's alternative revenue sources available that position could be churned on, and it's an investor relations position. We've already talked through that position, land and water, and that's to fund the water resource manager at point five FTE with benefits. With the idea being as we go into twenty twenty one of fully funding that with alternative revenue. That was the direction we were given. In land information right now, not fully funding the director position, but continue to look into the GIS needs going into twenty twenty one. In a medical examiner's office, we're creating a deputy medical examiner. So right now she doesn't have a deputy, we have pool investigators. And so for continuity of operations, we thought in the caseload, we thought it was important that we bring on a deputy could fill in the roles for Nikki when she needs it. Whether it's going on vacation or just helping keep up with cremation permits, et cetera, going on. Fair Park, we're working through what does that look like? Obviously, we have some revenue items we're working through in terms of the future, but Amy can tell you they're getting calls like crazy in terms of people looking at events. And so right now, keeping open that position of a fair director, not a fair director, I'm sorry. Fair Park supervisor role, and what does that need to be for the future? Getting me a little excited over right now. You're, you're still good. But a lot of it's just the stability of the revenue streams as we've really made that department a business structure, and they've done a great job and we look to the future. Parks, I talked about the flexibility of wants for leadership roles. We're moving down a path of where I think we'll, from a department head intern being appointed. But just looking at the future, some great things going on there. And then in sheriff department, you'll see a lot of ins and outs going on. And a lot of it relates to some of the structure we're looking at for the communication center for the future. And then finally, because it was easier to put the graph up on page versus trying to type this all out, this is what's going on in human services. The net result is zero. So look at, if you look at the position descriptions, you'll see a lot more clearer in your budget book. But I think for those who are new to the county board, it is not unusual that you see some things like this from human services as they continue to collaborate and look at new structures for new needs coming, new programs coming, and to maximize revenue sources coming into the department. And so that's why you'll see some of this as they look at the future and making some of those structural changes today. So ultimately, this is what our staffing is looking like right now. And again, you can look at some of those detail, specifically in eighty three, eighty six is a grid pattern of position changes. And the full authorization is on pages eighty seven to ninety one. But all in, we're approximately six hundred and ten positions for this year and between full time and part time work. So I'm starting to now get into the capital area. So I just want to briefly talk through some miscellaneous capital items that we have going on. So first, we talked a little bit about our fleet management program. We're going to be heading to our phase two of that program going into this next year. As we continue to rotate equipment out, there are some other areas we want to explore. Example is the sheriff's vehicles. Does it make sense to do that or not? The sheriff's, obviously, we have about what, five hundred twenty square miles in the county. They do a lot of driving. And so partly is we got to look, does that make business sense to look at something like this for the future? We already talked through the floodplain mitigation program and some of our ideas for the future and what we're looking at for carryover to go on. The parks department always has great new ideas, and a lot of it looks at outside revenue. And I just heard before I was here with Blair Back talking about Brew with the View. We have some great partners, and they've developed great partners, Joe and Kevin and Murray and the rest of the staff, keep those partnerships going. And so things like Brew with the View and other events help pay for small projects. And so depending on where we head into twenty twenty one, we may have some products added in the parks department. And then finally, I just want to highlight the inner urban, because we had some really good news this last week and a half. So right now, we continue to work on the engineering that we talked through last year. We're looking for a bid letting here at the end of twenty point one. Actually, I think in the next week, we're going to have our public information meeting with I, DOT, I almost call it IDAC, going back a little bit here, with that. And making sure all the public is aware of what we're looking at for the engineering process and looking at construction in twenty twenty two. So as you may recall, why we're moving where we're at today is we got close to a one point two million dollar tap grant from the feds. Well, the parks department, especially Mary, did a great job writing a stewardship grant recently. We scored very high. And we got about six hundred fifty five thousand dollars to go for phase two. And so we're sitting in a pretty good position that that product's going to be ready to go forward. We got a few more things, but hats off to the park staff and the work they did. Augie, I think, would be very proud of where they're at. But a lot of this, those relationships, Joe and, and Kevin and Mary continue with the state too, as we look at those programs. So good news all around in terms of how that looks. And I do not expect everyone to read this, but on page four, four, seven to four, four, eight is a breakdown by capital. So you can see everything from operational capital to the road projects and the equipment. One thing that you're going to see a little bit different this year is we don't show a lot for facilities in this budget this year. So there's two main reasons for that. Number one, we have a massive project going on at the south campus. If you haven't driven down to the south campus, if you don't realize we're doing construction down there, you're missing it. So there's a lot going on, a lot of good things, and we're improving, maintaining those buildings for the future reduced effective costs. The other thing is just as we go through the planning process, we'll be talking through soon is terms of this building. Where do we go? And once we have this idea of where do we have with this building, then we'll build a capital facility budgeted around that. The one thing that we are looking at is in the jail is we do have to replace their operating system basically for their doors, et cetera. It is an old IT system, and we need to make sure that's taken care of. So that's why that's in here. So overall, you're looking at close to seven point nine six million in capital projects. That includes all the road projects that we'll talk about here shortly. Just as a side note for those who are looking at the columns, kind of new to here. So the requested amount is what the department had asked for. The administrative budget is what is in the budget right now. Related funding is if there's alternative revenue sources coming in, so I'll just, I'll pick on the highway department. They have a depreciation account, we call it, and it's basically paying themselves back for use of the, the equipment. And that's what's fun these equipment going forward. So that's why we're looking at having a fleet management program because we want to do the similar thing for the rest of the fleet for the county. Budget carryover, if we identify carryover projects that need to take place or funding, that's what's there. Bonded debt, there's no, no projects this year, but last year it was. Then use the fund balance, that's where the eight hundred seventy nine thousand dollars coming from. So that's what that's for. And then also in the levy request, that's where the net new construction, that's where about roughly five hundred thousand dollars is parked for right now or utilized in that new construction. So highway projects, you're going to see we've done a lot of work on transition highway projects, and a couple slides will get into the nitty gritty behind it. So in twenty twenty one, one of our supervisors, favorite project, how he had his be done. For those who've driven on it, this has become a major road for Jefferson County. It feeds Fort Atkinson, Jefferson down to Whitewater, or for you, your institution on our UW Whitewater. So the traffic has only increased, but the road has gotten rough. And so a major project will be taking place next year specifically from Jefferson down to Whitewater. Basically, what we call a rehabilitation. So that's kind of a mid, mid road of construction product. So it's a mill and overlay plus additional work from a construction standpoint. That part is about three point six million. As I mentioned before, we have about a million dollars in MLS funding to pay for it with two point six million dollars in levy dollars. Going north, we have a resurfaced project, and that's the stretch from about Jefferson up to B. And that will be just a simple mill and overlay or resurfacing. That's about one point one five million. And then this part that you see up here in green, going north of B up to A, that's just a seal overcoat, and that's how we're going to maintain it. So one thing that we are going to start trying to introduce is what's called corridors, and then Bill and his staff have been working really hard on this, and you'll see why. But really, as we look at projects, we're going to look at corridors year by year to really maximize mobilization and cost efficiencies and really finding cutoff points for the future. So that's where you're going to start seeing things like this in terms of the red square boxes. So here's our five year plan. You'll see it spreads throughout. So in twenty twenty two, we're anticipate going to county highway A and county highway S. Twenty twenty three, county highway Q. Twenty twenty four, county highway K. Twenty twenty five is county highway D, and then twenty twenty six, the county, county highway O. So those first couple slides I showed, you'll see in your budget books, you can really see in color and a little bit more in detail of where all those road projects are going and the estimated costs that we're budgeting towards it. So Bill and I have talked a lot over the last years of how do we get this budget balanced or in terms of balance, in terms of keeping it going and keeping a way to keep the whole highway system basically redone in twenty years. That's the goal. And how do we make sure we have a budget to facilitate it? So what I'm showing in front of you is from two thousand five, a snapshot back in time. And you'll see colors throughout all the various county highway roads. At that point in time, we had five hundred and seventy seven segments. That's how the projects were basically done back then, right, Bill? I mean, they were broken up by five hundred seventy seven segments. So they weren't necessarily always a time in a long run. So the team has worked really hard for a while trying to streamline that a little bit more. And what they're looking at is developing a full twenty year transportation plan. Now, there's things we got to look at in terms of how this is budgeted, things we can look at with like enlarged shoulders for in terms of agriculture equipment to bike paths and things like that. But what they've tried to do is break it up in these twenty year segments as a whole. And again, these are based on corridors and what we think between rehab, resurfacing, reconstruction can safely be done within that budget. And so we're going to look ahead and you'll see the theme of these corridors. So this is what we're looking at for twenty six to twenty thirty. Thirty one to thirty five. And by the way, it feels very weird to say the last two versus twenty thirty one. It just feels weird talking that far in. And then this is what we're looking at for thirty six to forty. And so Bill has presented this as a finance committee, highway committee in terms of what they're visioning for this twenty year plan. We're going to continue to look at it, but we'll get it out there so we can get some more input. But again, it's based on corridors and making sure we get the system turned around every twenty years. And so I think there's a lot of good work that's gone in there, and I think it's going to feed nicely into the comprehensive plan as we look at some of the needs for transportation in the future. So strategic plan implementation, we had a lot of big ideas as we walked into twenty twenty, pre-COVID. And I, in some ways, I'm pretty proud of what the team did, because a lot of that work got done that we told you we were going to do in twenty twenty, and some did not. So obviously, a big heavy focus this past year is getting the comp plan and farming preservation plan done. We had projected it would be done by the end of twenty twenty, beginning of twenty twenty one. And guess what? I think we're going to make it. So that's a positive. But again, that's going to really focus in on a lot of these ideas for the future. We've done a lot of the extra studies already or looking at extra studies. So SRF actually did an initial transportation enhanced study for the future, and that's a big chapter in our comprehensive plan. We recently contracted with FERC of UW Whitewater. It's basically their economic and fiscal study research arm, and they're going to help us with a comprehensive housing study by community in our towns totally. Not only looking at single family homes, looking at affordability, but also looking at multi-family, and we hope to have that done by the end of this year. And then intergovernmental. So SRF took time to sit down with all our partners, towns and municipalities. We had focus groups. But I see most of you are aware, we've done some things with Wisconsin Policy Forum in terms of shared services. And shortly here, we'll be releasing our EMS study as well from the policy forum of potential opportunities to work to continue to work together. Broadband, that's been a big item, a big strategic initiative. And we did apply for a PSC grant, and unfortunately, we did not get it. And I'm going to talk about that a little bit more. But the good thing is this, last week, we got notified, we got about one point one eight million dollars for our comprehensive broadband program that we're going to try to really push through by the end of this year, and I'll talk through that more a little bit more. Prior base budgeting, we continue to work on this and look at for the future and how this impacts how we make decisions. The one thing we had really hoped to move forward on was a marketing plan, our strategic marketing plan, because there's a big call, and even our focus group in the comp plan really showed the need for that. With COVID, we really did not move forward with that. We had an LTE position helping us, and she spent a lot of time helping build that community partner program and all that kind of stuff that really focused on other partnerships related to COVID. Shared services, already talked through that. Opportunity zones, we're continuing to look at what that looks like, especially for the property that the county owns within opportunity zone. I already talked through the staff, staff assistance and then facilities. Obviously, we've done a big project already. And we'll be coming forward at the next county board meeting to talk through the outfall of that, or not the outfall, but the outcomes of that recommendations. All those things in our capital budget as a business unit, I see we finish up the old highway site. Again, encourage you who have not driven by there, take a look at what's happening out there between the new park. And as you've already authorized me to finish up the land sale, so we may have some residual going into twenty twenty one and final cleanup. But I think in all law, it worked out pretty good for the county. Facilities, like I said, south campus is moving, moving, moving. Bill's team is going to be looking at around workforce development of expansion, redoing the parking lots still this year. I think they have already did some mobilization out there. The sewer product, if you didn't, again, you know, we have a sewer product going on out there. Pretty significant dig. We have twenty to thirty foot holes that they're having to work through, but a needed sewer system for that campus. We have new parking lot lights installed out there and a lot of interior work going on. So one thing we will not get done this year for sure is the main parking lot will not be redone and redoing annex road, but the highway department will the main parking lot will not be redone and redoing annex road, but, uh, the highway department will be doing that going into next year. Um, obviously we finished up the study for the courthouse and then the nine-one-one project is moving alive and well. A lot of moving pieces on this right now. Uh, we've approved the final design. We're working on final micro path analysis that we have to do, microwave analysis that we have to do. Uh, engineering of our towers, um, equipment install and coordination for the tower construction, which is, we'll get here shortly. So you'll see in the capital budget, there's no new dollars um, allocated in the capital budget business unit, but that basically will have carryover of projects in progress, basically that will carry over. So broadband, so obviously we applied for a grant in, uh, twenty nineteen. Uh, we did not award, but we got, we got some good scores. Um, and it was a big, big project and that was part of it. Uh, it was, uh, significant. But we maintain our partnerships. We kept talking with Dodge County. We kept talking with our private partners. We kept looking at how does this work with our telecommunications projects? And it even partnered with, as the board noted by a resolution you pass about working together with Bertram specifically on building some towers and cost sharing that for our telecommunication and broadband. The last two months, we've been working with PSC, um, and potential dollars that could come our way and some of it was in the, it's from the CARES Act dollars. And so especially the last probably four weeks, there's been a flurry of activity, um, putting things together with partners in response to the PSC. And so as was announced last week, um, we received one point one, one, eight million dollars. Um, and in the yellow, um, these are Bertram towers that would be in, oops. I'm moving really fast, you guys want to be done, right? The yellow are Bertram towers that we'll be looking at installing and the white are networks, um, areas that they're looking for increased services. So we're working through getting things in positions right now. They have to have these things operational by December thirtieth. Always they pay for it. They don't get reimbursed for it. So there's a risk that we're working on with our private partners to get this done, to provide broadband services. The areas that you see in yellow are areas that we already had designated for potential towers for our telecommunications projects. So a lot of that stuff was already in the works. We're working on final leases with those property owners, but we in planning, uh, Bertram coming in, get some slow borrowings done, file survey work. And, uh, hopefully with the next few months, you're going to see towers getting installed. And then, uh, we'll get broadband going and then we'll finish up some of the stuff we have to do for telecommunications. The beauty of this grant, it's a hundred percent. If we complete all the tasks with our partners, no matching funds are required for this. So what you see in blue is the areas right now that are underserved or unserved for broadband in the county. So you see with our various circles, basically made some pretty darn good headway in terms of providing services for those who need it. So we're pretty excited about this. I know supervisor and Art are very excited about it when I got to talk, tell on the phone. Um, but a lot of hard work for many people, um, went into it. So we're, we're going to be excited. We got a lot more work to go, but a pretty good thing. And so finally we go into our courthouse campus. And so there's going to be some repeat slides from last year. We do have some board members and some questions that come up. And so our courthouse campus is all these various facilities. And as you'll see, we have a property from the late eighteen hundreds, that's where MIS is at. To our courthouse facility, our main courthouse that was built in the sixties to the jail and sheriff's department was built in nineteen ninety-one. Um, you'll also see that we have some lease parking here and we do own that property E. Uh, one of those properties, human services is using it right now to help lower some housing hospitals in need. Um, so it's been a good benefit for the county. So, um, as, as the board knows, we had to postpone what we had intended to be in a workshop meeting. And our plan is to have that presentation from Potter lost and Moss brothers and elders to you all, um, on October twenty-seventh. That happens to be the night of the public hearing. We're not sure how many public hearing comments we'll have, but usually we feel that'd be a good use of everyone's time. Um, we figured after I talked for a while here, you probably don't want to listen to another hour of conversation tonight. So, um, we thought that'd be a good opportunity to talk through it. So, um, we will schedule more tours. I know I had about six board members went on a tour with me recently as part of that initial meeting. I think it was eye opening for some of the board members. And so I'll make sure I get, we get that out for the rest of the board in terms of the chance to, um, go through it. The tour ended up being almost three hours. I hadn't planned on that, but there's a lot of good questions, a lot of things that board members want to see. So we'll make sure, um, we facilitate enough time for that. On South Campus, when I refer to South Campus, just for situational, uh, understanding, um, composes of these following buildings. A is our leader house that was built in nineteen ninety-six. This is basically our crisis stabilization or CBRF facility or CSP, um, entity works out of there. Uh, building B on this map is our main health and human services building. Uh, it was built in nineteen eighty with an addition nineteen ninety-five and that's why we're really working on it. C, um, that is being updated as well. That was built in nineteen thirty-eight. Uh, that was our TB nurses quarters for a while. Uh, so when we had to quarantine, uh, TV patients, we had a nursing dormitory. So that's what it was. And human services transition that to office, uh, staff areas. E is just our maintenance shed. And the most of you are very familiar with that. That's a workforce development UW extension economic development building. And this, as we look for our facilities in the future, uh, we talked about our big ones, but we have a lot of facilities. Um, now sheriff's annex, um, that was built in nineteen seventy-two, but that was one of the first products I worked with the sheriff on is just, we did a lot of upgrades up there to get to, uh, make sure water didn't leak and things like that. So a significant investment out there. Uh, we have a training facility up in Lake Mills for our sheriff's department. Um, that was built in nineteen thirty-six. The fairgrounds, um, we continue to look at what do we need to do out there, not only in terms of expansion, but quite honestly, take care of what we have. Um, uh, for ongoing operations and safety. So that was why we did the swine barn and worked with partners to get that funded. But we have things such as the beef barn, um, uh, are concerning, but we're going to look at what partners are making that happen. So just know we have that. Uh, Kevin and I spent a lot of time talking about our park facilities and how do we look at those costs long terms of maintaining those, but also those appreciation values of those facilities. And Bill sitting pretty over there at the highway shop, um, he's got the newest facilities of us, of everybody. But again, I say that tongue in cheek and part of what we want to make sure is for the future is we make sure we take proactive preventative maintenance measure out there. So we don't get a position of having expensive repairs down the line. So this slide will probably look a little familiar from last year and that's because these things don't change. And, and for those who sat through the finance committee meetings, you heard a lot of these from our department heads. We focused a lot of COVID, but some of these other issues facing our community and the counties don't go away. Um, we talked with the DA, the new DA hall, new DA, you know, opioid issues though, new drug issues, overdose issues. They're still alive and well in the county that we're dealing with with law enforcement, right? So those things don't go away as we look at the future. Um, and we do have those challenges and they're going to be there. But I think we also have a proactive team that's going to look at how do you problem solve these? Um, how do we look at sustainable revenue? Um, so we look at the issue of the sales tax and even before COVID, finance committee and us, we're talking about, do we stress test it? Do we limit how much goes in operations? So we don't have a big dip that impacts operations. And that's something we continue to want to look at in terms of how we forecast for the future too. Um, some of the unknowns, um, we built a human services emergency fund balance to take care of out of state placements, hospitalizations. Um, we often talk about the cost. If you have a kid that's out of placement, out of state, those costs can easily get to be twenty to thirty thousand dollars a month. A month. So it can get expensive really fast. And what we've tried to do is make sure we built systems in place to be proactive in intervention, but also make sure we have safeguards in place to protect the financial interests of the county. With that being said, we got a lot of positives and we want to keep talking about those positives, right? Um, our, our bond rating is very significant. And if you look at the comments, very positive comments are a lot of bond rating. We talked through our balance sheet, basically look at those, that fund balance I walk, quickly walk through. We have a lot of things reserved for liabilities that we're protected against. Huge. Solid fund balance, limited debt, even if we look for a bigger project, we're still have a pre insignificant debt load for a county our size. Not saying that's why we do it. I just wanted to, we're doing pretty good in terms of managing that. We got to continue to look at alternative revenue. So I'm going to use Amy as an example. They're looking at how do we make money and raise money for the swine bar? So they partnered with Jones. And we're looking at a pork chop dinner with the goal of raising money to finish up the swine bar. Out of box thinking, new ideas are looking ahead for the future, right? And community partners are going to make it happen too. And we already talked about parks. Those are things that our team is looking at doing. Collaboration, uh, we continue to look at collaborations. We've developed five oh one C threes. Um, we've developed ways to work with other governments within the county and outside the county. Um, Dodge County is a great example that between the health insurance consortium to how we do economic development and we continue to look at it. Location, location, location. Uh, I think we talk about it a lot, um, and, and with the comp plan, how do we implement that opportunity? And then policy conversations, we've talked a lot about this. We, we have a lot of things going on, operational needs, how do you support it? How do we implement policy? Uh, what's important data? So I, I put up Alice data here because I think it's a good snapshot and this is stuff United Way puts together a snapshot. How much does it cost to live in your community? Um, and what changes? So we have some communities that forty percent of our folks can't live in right now. I think you'd be surprised as we look at rolling that data out, who those communities are. How do we improve that? Should I go beef, get some forty to thirty-five percent, uh, thirty-five percent to thirty percent? How do we get there? So those are data conversations we should have. Capital budget, we talked quite a bit about how we want to reset that and look for the future and look at functionality. Personnel, um, we're, that's the lifeblood of our organization. It's our staff and the professionalism they bring and the new ideas they take, bring forward. So how do we continue to recruit, retain and develop skills? Um, we do have a, we're looking at a lot of retirements coming up still. Um, that's just where we're at. How do we maintain that for the future? One thing that you will see in our budget is we did not slice and dice professional development for cost-saving measures. Um, there's a lot of travel that's probably reduced because folks are looking at virtual learning. But we've encouraged staff to look at new leadership skills because this is a new way of thinking of the future, uh, telecommuting and how do you collaborate and how you develop leaders? Um, we just had another group, um, uh, graduate from WC, WCA Leadership Academy, uh, just recently, even through COVID, they made it through. Um, and not all of them were department heads. They're up and coming leaders who wanted to, uh, evolve and develop their leadership skills. So give them a lot of credit. Financial forecasting, uh, we're bringing up product called Forecast Five to help us with that. And, uh, Mark and his staff were really working on that to help us really drill down even more data to help make financial decisions. And I guess my last comment before I get into, um, some of the logistical items coming up is outcomes and data. So what, what outcomes, as you look at our budget, do you want to see change? What are those outputs that you want to see change? And what inputs as a result do we need to have in place to make those outcomes output become a reality? Um, I kind of look at it as an algebraic formula. If we want to change the outputs and the outcomes of our organization, are we willing to change the inputs? Because if we don't change the inputs, I'm fairly certain that outputs and outcomes are going to stay the same. If we're willing to look at how we look at those inputs, we have a higher risk of, chance of success that we're going to get those outcomes outputs to where you would like them to go. And so as we go through this journey, not just for next budget year, those are questions I want us to continue to talk about in a constructive manner. So here's a timeline for the budget. So obviously tonight you got to hear me talk for a little bit, probably a little bit longer than I planned, but I apologize for that. Tomorrow, the full budget will be posted online and to make sure the whole public is aware of it, um, of what's going on, the complete book, all four hundred plus pages will be online reviewing pleasures. And for those on supervisors in line, please make sure you get with Tammy. So we can make sure you get the full budget book. As a handout, you'll see a memo from me to all the supervisors and this outlines our supervisory amendment process. So, um, we have formalized the amendment process with supervisors. So if you would like to see something change within the budget, you may submit this to my office and there's actually a spreadsheet form to talk about what changes you would like to see. We're asking those to be in my office by November second. What that does is gives us a chance between admin, finance and departments to look at that request to ensure what's be, we can give a full financial analysis of that impact of that request to change. So we can present to the finance committee and the county board. So everyone has the facts of what that change might be. Now, if you do fill this out, we, and it goes to finance committee, the finance committee on November fifth will make a recommendation or non-recommendation. No matter what that recommendation is, it will come to the county, full county board in November. So even if it's, we receive a zero to five vote, we will still bring it to the full county board for consideration. US boards still have the right on November the tenth to do a floor amendment, um, to the budget. Um, this does not take that away. Just, just help us make sure we have a professional process to make it happen. So we can give you good data to make good decisions. Um, as a reminder, October twenty-seventh is the public hearing. Um, it will be in this room. Um, we will try to make sure folks, uh, as a public, if they want to make written comments, et cetera, we will find a way to make sure that is, uh, we can do that in this new environment. Um, as a whole. And then the last thing is we're here to help. Um, so if you need help filling out the amendment form, if you have questions in the budget, please reach out to Mark, myself, a department head. We'll talk you through how this works. Each staff position in many ways have a different way they're funded. Um, if it's a position of child support, you have a sixty-six percent revenue stream coming in. In Bill's department, you have fifty percent revenue stream coming in. In human services department, you have a hundred percent revenue stream coming in. So it's not always an absolute one hundred percent change on these things. So just please ask questions. Um, and we're here to help educate and make decisions. So with that, Mr. Chair, I, I am done and barring any questions.
Thank you very much. We're entertaining any questions you have for, uh, uh, Mr. Weimar at this, at this point. It's a lot to absorb, so. Thank you very much. Man, we very appreciate that and it was very well organized. Thank you. Okay, this moves on to committee. Uh, reports, resolutions and ordinances, highway committee, resolution operates highway department equipment purchase of motor graders and brush chippers. Supervisor Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, resolution number twenty, twenty, twenty-five, authorize the, authorize highway department equipment purchase of motor graders and brush chippers, whereas Jefferson County Highway Committee is, was authorized by the Jefferson County Board of Supervisors to receive bids on various equipment and whereas bids were solicited for two new motor graders and one new brush chipper, which bids were received and opened on September twenty-second, twenty twenty. And whereas the bids were received, reviewed by the highway department staff and the highway committee. And after reviewing factors including the bid prices, quality of equipment, service of equipment, warranty values and potential trade-in values. The highway committee makes the following recommendations for the purchase of two motor graders from Fabic Cat Madison and one brush chipper from L F George from Milwaukee Shaw. Now therefore be it resolved that Jefferson County Department, highway department is authorized to purchase two motor graders from Fabic Cat and one brush chipper from L F George for the above prices, above listed prices. Fiscal note, funding for these purchases comes from the highway department equipment operation cost center number five, three, two, four, one. Mr. Chairman, I vote, or move for approval of this resolution.
And here's our second, second supervisor Morris. Any, any discussions, question? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Was that one opposed or is that a late aye? Okay, the resolution passes. Uh, human services, uh, human resources committee, supervisor Brock.
This is resolution number twenty, twenty, twenty-six, amending the retirement addendum to the group master policy with Dean Health Plan, reducing the eligibility for retirees under the age of sixty-five or Medicaid, Medicare eligible and limited plan design choice to a separate high direct health plan. And I would like to have this sent back to committee for continual review. Since we met last week, there's been some pretty important information come from part of our consortium. And this is a very important decision that needs to be made. And I'm not sure it can be made even within the next month or so. But I challenge all of you to read this very carefully and do your best to understand it because this is, um, this is crucial for our current employees, our retirees that we've already had and those coming up in the future. Some very difficult decisions that have to be made, which affect all of the county employees. So I'm asking it to be sent back.
Second.
We suck at that supervisor one key. Any discussion? Any discussion, questions on why it's being sent back, anything? So let's have a return to committee. We don't need a vote on it unless, uh, you want to vote to return it to committee. Otherwise not. Okay. So this is returned to committee and we'll come forward again. And, uh, then resolution on, uh, creating one full-time custodian position shared by the sheriff's office and the central service department and eliminating two part-time custo- custodian positions at the sheriff's office.
This is resolution number twenty, twenty, twenty-six. Jefferson County custodians plays a huge role in protecting the health of employees, clients, inmates and the general public. They prevent the spread of disease and infection and maintain a self-work, safe working environment. The custodian's role is vital to public health and safety throughout the year and is heightened during the critical situations such as the current COVID nineteen outbreak, influenza season and inclement weather. The custodial jail responsible staffing responsible for the general cleaning of the The custodial jail responsible, staffing responsible for the general cleaning of the courthouse, the sheriff's office and the jail currently include central service department, three custodians, two full time, one full time funded as part time and the sheriff's office, which two custodians both part time. The ability to maintain clean facilities is affected by the high turnover rate for part time custodians, which over the past two years is two hundred and fifty percent at the sheriff's office and hundred percent at the courthouse. In addition, both part time custodian positions are currently vacant at the sheriff's office. One of these positions has been vacant since March twenty twenty. A full time position will increase the ability to recruit and retain staff will provide greater flexibility of sharing staff between departments and will ultimately assist in assuring this cleanliness and safety of employees, inmates, clients and the general public. On September fifteenth, twenty twenty, the human resources committee reviewed the request from the human resource director and county administrator to eliminate two vacant part time custodial positions at the sheriff's office and to create one full time custodian position to be allocated seventy five percent at the sheriff's office and twenty five percent at central service department with flexibility to work at other departments as needed. The human resource committee considered this resolution at its meeting on September fifteenth, twenty twenty and recommended forwarding to the county board of supervisors for approval. Fiscal note, salary infringed benefits for the full time custodial position for the remainder of twenty twenty is ten thousand one hundred fifty eight dollars and thirty cents. The savings of the elimination of two part time custodians for the remainder of twenty twenty is six thousand eight eight hundred ninety five dollars and twenty four cents. And the savings from the part time custodial vacancies since March twenty twenty is six thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars and twenty four cents for a total savings of thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety dollars and forty eight cents for the remainder of twenty twenty. Therefore, no tax levy is required. Creating and eliminating positions funded through the current year's budget requires a budget amendment such as the county board approval requires a two thirds vote of the entire membership of the county board, twenty of the thirty members of the county board, I move for passage.
Second.
Who's the second? Second by Supervisor Jacob, questions, discussion? We will, since this takes a two thirds vote, we will have a roll call vote for this one.
The roll call isn't working, we'll have to do a voice vote.
All right.
Okay, Supervisor Jones? Supervisor David? Supervisor Brockler?
Aye.
Supervisor Herbst? Supervisor Morris? Supervisor Winnicky? Supervisor Renard? Supervisor Zastro? Supervisor Johns? Supervisor Smith? Supervisor Smith?
Aye.
Thank you. I got you. Supervisor Martin?
Aye.
Supervisor Lund? Supervisor Nass?
Aye.
Supervisor Payne? Supervisor Coats? Supervisor White?
Aye.
Supervisor Grina? Supervisor Backland? Supervisor Canard? Supervisor Jacob?
Aye.
Supervisor Lindell? Supervisor Felker? Supervisor Fitzgerald? Supervisor Nealon? Supervisor Schultz? Supervisor Roberts?
Aye.
And Supervisor Christensen?
Aye.
Okay, we have twenty seven yes and three absent.
And so orders approved. Takes us to planning and zoning committee, report on the few positions, Supervisor Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Report to the honorable members of, of Jefferson County Board of Supervisors. Jefferson County Planning and Zoning Committee, having considered petitions to amend the official zoning map of Jefferson County filed for a public hearing held on September seventeenth, twenty twenty as required by law pursuant to Wisconsin state statutes, notice thereof having been given and do, been, being duly advised by the wishes of the town boards and persons in the affected areas, hereby makes a following recommendation, approval of petition as listed, dated this twenty eighth day of September, twenty twenty, Blaine Paulson Secretary. It moves on to ordinance number twenty twenty ten, amending the official zoning map, amended as printed there. I move for approval of this ordinance.
There's a second by Supervisor Morris, Supervisor Canard?
I will abstain for potential conflict interest.
Any other discussion, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, it passes. Takes us to public comment of a general nature, anybody here for public comment of a na, of a general nature? I noticed this evening our former chair was in the back, I thought he'd make a comment one time or another, but. So nothing but comment, announcements, Supervisor Brockler?
Many of you know that Marinatha Baptist University hosts business breakfasts and the last one of the year is this week and I was encouraged to invite you to it. The topic is how leadership impacts organizational confidence, confidence. That started seven, the breakfast, the presentation is seven thirty. I know I'm biased, but you probably will have a hard time getting a better breakfast for your money that at Marinatha right now. Susan Marshall is the speaker, she's taught at Mount Mary as well as in Chicago and in Michigan, thirty years of experience. And right now she's connected with the Exonia Bank and she lives in Economawak. I have paragraphs of her bio, which I won't read to you, but if you'd like to know more, see me afterwards, thank you.
What day is again Jim, in time?
Thursday morning, seven, breakfast, seven thirty speaker, it's usually done between eight thirty and eight forty five. And social distancing is all taken care of with the placements of the tables.
Thank you, thank you very much. Any other announcements, any other announcements? Then again, oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a quick note on the agenda, we just quick notice a small thing. Next meet is not October twentieth, it's October twenty seventh, again, October twenty seventh. Make sure you're tracking that please, because it is, A, it's the public hearing, so you can hear from the people of the county. But B, we also have lines of presentation on the courthouse, sheriff and jail facilities and you probably wouldn't, that'd be a great presentation and elders as well. And then we got stranger up there too, Mr. Chair, I think. So I just want to formally welcome back our, our courthouse of Blair for his time.
Come on, let me back to her. Any other announcements for the best of all of us? Otherwise stay, oh, we have, in the back.
I just want to plug the pork chop dinner real quick that Ben had mentioned. We are doing a drive through pork chop dinner on October twenty ninth, it's a Thursday night from four to seven PM. You can buy tickets now in advance for thirteen dollars, otherwise it's fifteen dollars for two pork chops and sides and the first two hundred people get a free ice cream token to be redeemed at Jones Market in Fort Atkinson. And we are fundraising to finish our swine project, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Anyone else? Then we will see you the twenty seventh and stay well. Oh, we still ought to do that, let's do it, Gern, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nice to be back in this room again.